Yeah. You don't have to for a while, so.
Yeah. It'd be.
Yeah.
Who we got this week?
Oh, the Hones.
Oh, no, I don't know better than you.
Well, I've been a little bit better. God, there's a God. I don't think I've ever been God.
Really late. The same something.
Who?
Alan. Alan Murray.
I start, I don't know what it is. I said, I can see, I think so, I may be wrong.
Good play. The highest status in America. It's good republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jason Stewart, please.
Give back your heads, please. If I had to follow the feeling for you this time, one of the things for this day, well, thank you for our city. Thank you for everyone that's gathered here tonight. We ask God that you lead, God, and direct this council as we do business for the city. We ask the Lord that you keep your hands on our police, our fire, safety, and our soldiers abroad, God, and we ask all of us in Jesus' name.
Y'all calling, leaving the order by asking on this side for roll call, roll call, please.
Cindy Wood. Here. Candida Robinson. Kara Roach.
Here.
Billy Poe.
Here.
Jason Stewart.
Here.
John Paul Thompson.
Here.
Arnie Lane.
Here.
Brandon Schrader.
Here.
Bonnie Winkle.
Here.
Greg Carson.
Here.
We have a call, you guys copy the minutes, the camera meeting is a tie game. We have a man, so we're gonna go on, I'll let her kind of vote.
Take a moment, your first.
Jason Stewart made a motion to approve.
I'll leave you second.
John Paul Thompson, second, in discussion. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Hold them up. And then it's approved, financial force, I'll show you the package. Now, we give it to the group, roll call, ready.
I'm making a motion to approve the financial board agreement.
Arnie Lane made a motion to approve. Second. Mr. Stewart, second, in discussion.
What's the next budget meeting?
It's gonna be, we haven't set one yet, it will be very soon, but we're getting the budget, make sure you're ready. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
I propose no. Financial force has approved. Fuck the reports. Uh, Captain Henry.
Sorry, nothing.
Okay. Chief, uh, Thomas, before he was hired, he told us that he already paid for a vacation for this week, and I thought, well, that's a good thing, so that's why he's not here. Uh. Revus, Chief of Pepper, I could've went on there.
Oh, he was.
Uh, I got assistant chief.
He's younger, better looking than I am. There you go. Uh, I'll be real quick, the Fire Department, uh, is, we got a softball team in the men's softball league this, this year, so if y'all wanna come out at six thirty, seven thirty, and watch us old men fall around and hurt each other, I invite y'all to come out. Macy's doing awesome things up there, and she's not here, she's doing great things at that complex, I'm pretty, pretty excited about that. Um, another thing that the Fire Department's doing is, we have that burn trailer that we talked about last month, and we should be, we're having a big burn this Saturday from eight to noonish, maybe depending on how long it's gonna take. Uh, but if you guys wanna come by while we're doing burns, if you see that thing smoking, come by and take a look, uh, we'll drag you through it, we'll throw on some gear if you want to and put you in there, but, uh, but that trailer's a big deal for us, it's, um, we're gonna have it for a few months, and we get to get really good training like that. But our Fire Department, we have one of, one of only like twelve, uh, if you will, level two NFPA certified fire instructors with gun, uh, they've only put on one class in the whole state, he happened to be invited to go take it, and the rest of us are, are level one, so we can actually do the line fighter training to NFPA standard with that burn trailer and our instructor Justin Truman. Uh, so it's a, it's gonna be awesome, we gotta have so many hours of training and, and with a certified burn building, and that's a certified burn building, so we can get those one, the good hours that we need, and also good quality training, so. Um, we only burn hay and pallet wood because you don't, we can't burn stuff that makes black smoke just like anybody else, but yeah, if you see a smoke, come by there, because that's what we're doing, we're training, and if you get any complaints, let them know, like that neighborhood, I know we're closed, so we're not trying to do it a hot, for long periods of time, because it will smoke up the neighborhood, and we don't wanna do that, so. Um, but if you get some complaints, just let them know that, that we're training, and come talk to us, and we'll, we'll take care of that, too. Anybody got any questions?
I have a question, but I don't know, people are needing to ask it, I don't know if right to ask it or what.
Alright.
Since we're back at the fire station, ton more medical emergencies using the helicopter. Can we, and it may be in the works, it may not be in the works, but I was out there last night when we're putting out puff lights. Can we get an estimate to get stationary lights around the fence?
So, I can do that, sure, what's funny is, we installed some, literally the week of the tornado.
And it ripped them out.
And it ripped them out, yeah, I mean, literally, we did it ourselves, and it wasn't great, it was gonna be like, I mean, we was just using a battery and some old emergency lights that we had, and we could use a switch, but yeah, I would like to do that, absolutely. Um, and we do use it a lot, I mean, some serious calls have come out in the last couple days with the, I mean, we had a pedestrian death, and some strokes, and some dead serious calls, and we do use a lot of that, and the helicopter pilots around here know that that, that, uh, pad is there, we've had a helicopter making emergency landing there, believe it or not, during.
Is that a concrete pad?
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
We work on it.
Yeah, the hardest problem is it, it's so far from electricity, so we were just gonna do like a battery system and go out there and just put the switch, and because it's just LED lights, you don't have to, so we keep the battery charged, but absolutely, I get what they're gonna do.
Well, my deal was, I mean, if we're out on the car, out on the coast somewhere, and everybody's caught up, and we gotta land, and nobody's there to put the pucks out.
Yeah, and I.
I mean, those pilots are good enough, they can probably land without it, but.
Yeah, but it, it's funny to guess, 'cause we literally did, we put, they were green, I think they were green and white, maybe, uh, some leftover ones that we had from the install.
I don't see why we can't run electricity out of it.
Yeah, we can, it just costs a little more to have it, have it done, but it'd be a lot easier for us, I was just trying to be cheap last time to do it ourselves, but it, um, it would be better if it was done out, yeah.
Get, get the fee, get the fee, uh. Either Thursday or Friday or Thursday next week.
Sure.
And we'll sit down and look and see what we'll come up with, and, uh, what we can get done after today.
Okay.
That's a good point. How did you realize that you didn't have it last night? Well, I didn't either, 'til I went out there last night.
We used to put four vehicles, didn't we?
Yeah.
Four or four.
Yeah.
I remember that a long time.
Yeah.
Last week, LD.
Anybody else have any questions? Chief Camper? Or Mr. Fagan?
I don't have anything, but I'd be glad to answer any questions, and Gary told me he was gonna take care of that for me, but he didn't.
Only thing, I, I've had several people on Facebook say that there's a leak down to Davis Street somewhere, and I drove down there yesterday, there is a puddle of water that comes around Delta, but this one person, I didn't catch her name, they're complaining that they can't mow their backyard because the water's seeping under the fence. Do you know anything about that, James?
That they can't mow their backyard? I know we can't mow our yard down there because of it, it's something that, uh, there is a leak there, or we thought that there was, uh, tried to narrow it down, and we've talked about it again today, but we think we've determined that what the problem is, is that the concrete tank is overflowing.
Okay.
When it fills, but it's not doing it all the time, so they're working on getting the controls set, uh, to drop that level, and don't know why that is kicking out, if we can't resolve it ourselves, we're gonna have to get somebody else with better talents than we do to take care of it. But we've been all over it, as a matter of fact, Archie and those, them were down there today to kind of dig a ditch across it, to see if we had something else going on, too, but the water runs around the corner down there, and then it don't.
Yeah.
And so I think the overflow's gonna catch it, but we, but we are working on it.
Okay, good deal, I told him I'd ask.
You bet. I talked, I talked to me, Ben, at the day about, uh, the being prepared for a rebuild for the current water tank, we've got that grass, we'll replace that, and, uh, he told me that he should have everything ready by the end of the week, and hopefully put it back out. I've been pushing, I, I call every day, hey, when is it gonna get this? He knows, he goes as fast as he can, I understand that, so.
Yep.
Uh, Macy's not here, she has, uh, ball games going on at the complex, and that, I play soccer and played, played football, basically, she told me I had two hundred and ninety or three hundred and ninety, two hundred and ninety, I find kids, I've signed up for all of that. Yes. Uh, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, sir. Well, good news, I suppose that you shared some of it last meeting, but, uh, we've won in this last week or so, tap trails for half a million. Um, we did get the EEC BG Ballpark Lighting, energy efficient, community block. So, uh, there's two hundred thousand in lighting there, we applied for more, uh, with another thing, because lighting's expensive at ballparks, but it will save, and there is a turnaround, maybe we, uh, we can do the math and find out how long it will take for you to actually make money, you know, and save money on that, for, on the whole thing. The other thing that we did was we won the Trend Center Award for Public Works, 'cause the, the bus system is rare in small towns our size.
That wasn't supposed to let them out yet.
Well, it, it is, it's, it's not public.
It is now. Right, bro, don't tell anybody, and I said, go take it back.
There's a few of these things that have been submitted but not awarded yet, water connections, playground equipment, fire equipment, sirens, tornado sirens, and, uh, the generator installation. We are in search hydrants, dog kennels, weather radios, cops grants, that won't be till next year for sure, tasers, we're working on, and, uh, uh, there's probably something else, but that's what I can say right here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any committee reports?
We are currently working on the Community Christmas Festival that we have every year, um, gonna do a few different things this year, the theme of it, uh, is gonna be hometown club, um, so, we'll be announcing that soon. Um, so try to do a little bit differently than what we did, instead of having booths, we're selling things, we're gonna have booths that are giving things, so, um, and then we have a new tree that we're gonna light up.
We just got a new tree?
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes, I kinda want to go on that, but anyway, yeah, we have a new tree, it's beautiful, and I am going to reach out actually to our choir here at Truman to see if they will sing for us at it, um, try to get the school involved some, uh, and it's really not a lot, we got, we got everything nailed down, Revus, talk with him, they're gonna do the hot dogs again, I'm not supposed to achieve time, um, they had their popcorn, hot chocolate, you know, that they kind of had in that corner, um, so, we're excited about it, it'll be here for you on December sixth, which is the day after the parade. Did you want it?
Thank you, my man. The committee report. Uh, word report. We don't have any unfinished business, we're gonna go into new business, and first thing is, uh, the opponent of the planning is only Commissioner Amber Warren, resigned for many reasons, and, uh, I'm recommending the opponent of Jeff Jones to replace Amber, uh, Jeff, will you stand up, please?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Jeff works for Arkansas Department of Emergency Management, I've known Jeff for several years, I've watched him work, he's in college, working field, uh, and I believe that he's an eligible area planning, it's only that we've been official to our city. I'm making a motion to accept.
I'll take it.
Arnie Lane, Bonnie Winkle, second, in discussion. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
I propose no. Well, I'm voting, appreciate you, uh, what forward we've got. All right, next up is Resolution number twelve ninety-nine. Uh, twenty twenty-three, the council passed Resolution number twelve ten, condemning the property of four sixteen Ellis, on August the fifth, one structure was raised by the city through the Public Works Department, uh, an invoice was sent to the registered address, and the certified letter was refused, the owner of the property was Donald Trenton, which is actually deceased, but the property taxes have been paid by his son, Doug Trenton, and you have copies of all of that in your, in your, uh, packet. Now, for son, Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-four nine oh three, I'm asking that you approve a cleanup lien to be placed on the property, as you can, uh, to condemn, then raise the property, it's expensive, and, uh, considering this, start recouping some of these costs, uh, and I'll just be honest with you, the reason I haven't brought more of these up in the past is because I didn't know exactly how we had to go about doing it, I've talked to Jamie several times to get this lined out, I think we finally have it lined out where we can do it legally, that way, and we can start putting liens on these properties, and hopefully they'll pay the, so. That, or license, Todd, you should read Resolution number twelve ninety, uh, twelve ninety-nine.
A resolution approving the perfecting of a cleanup lien on the property located at four sixteen Ellis Street, Truman, Arkansas, pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-four nine oh three, whereas the property located at four sixteen Ellis Street, Truman, Arkansas, was condemned by the criminal city council in accordance with applicable law, and whereas on August twen, August fifth, twenty twenty-five, the city of Truman Public Works Department raised the, the condemned structure located on said property, and whereas an invoice for the cost of demolition and cleanup was sent via certified mail on August fifth, twenty twenty-five, to the registered owner of the property, Mr. Donald Trenton, and the mailing was refused, and whereas it has been noted that the reported owner, Donald Trenton, is to book property taxes have been maintained and kept current by Mr. Doug Trenton, the son of the recorded owner, and whereas no payment or response to the invoice has been received within the thirty day period allowed for payment, and whereas pursuant to the Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-four nine oh three, the city of Truman is authorized to file a perfecting lien on the real property for the costs incurred in removing, raising, or cleaning up, cleaning up structures or property, and to attach said lien to the property's tax statement, and whereas failure to pay such lien within the timeframe set forth by the state law may result in, in foreclosure proceedings on the property. Now, for, now, therefore, bid resolved by the City Council of the City of Truman, Arkansas, section one, the City Council hereby approves the perfecting of a cleanup lien on the property located at four sixteen Ellis Street, Truman, Arkansas, for the costs incurred in raising the condemned structure and cleaning up the property in accordance with the Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-four nine oh three, section two, said lien shall be attached to the property's tax statement and collected as provided by law, section three, the property representative is advised that failure to pay the lien within the allotted time as prescribed by Arkansas law may result in foreclosure, foreclosure proceedings on the property.
I've been hearing motions to approve. Next, Stewart made a motion.
Second.
Who was that, I saw? Cindy Wood made a second, in any discussion?
This says, passed and approved on the ninth date of December.
Yeah, uh, that is a mistake, and I'm gonna ask you, George, amend that to the date.
My mother's amended.
Thank you, I find it worth to make a motion to amend it to October fourteenth, or second. I'll say. John Paul Thompson, second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Hold it low. It is amended now. Uh, I don't know if, Jason will amend here, now, we did that kind of backwards, and amended the motion to send you members, second, and any, any questions now, Dan? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
I propose no. All right, I will get that filed as soon as possible. These things, they have a timeframe that you've gotta toe through, if you're done by this time, this, by this time, then if you wait too long, then you're, you're tied up, so, we're gonna try to get these done, and get them handled. All right, next up is ordinance seven forty-seven. This is an ordinance to amend Order number six sixty-one, which is the zoning ordinance, uh, the amendment is to change the zoning of a portion of property on Steel Creek from A-one agriculture to plan unit development, to allow for planned unit housing to be developed there, uh, Ms. Todd, will you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend ordinance number six sixty-one, known as the zoning ordinance providing for the change in zoning boundaries, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Truman, Arkansas, section one, that ordinance number six sixty-one, known as the zoning ordinance of the City of Truman, shall be amended by the change in zoning district boundaries as follows, from agricultural A-one to planned unit development, uh, of the property identified as parcel number five 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 dash zero three four five two dash zero 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 zero, with the legal description of part of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of section ten, township twelve north, range oh five east, Truman, Boise County, Arkansas, commonly referred to as ten health, uh, section two, the border leg growth in the newly rezoned area and in the other areas of the City of Truman, Arkansas, are necessary for the public peace, health, and safety, and emergency is therefore declared, and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety shall be informed and after its passage.
I've been hearing a motion, go for it. Ask the Stewart to make a motion, second. Arnie Lane, second, in discussion. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
I propose no. Next up is ordinance number seven forty-eight, uh, this is the ordinance that was originally presented by Mr. Schrader, uh, we discussed it here, and after Mr. Gasway, Mr. Schrader himself has made adjustments to the ordinance, we're bringing it before the council, Ms. Todd, will you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance sixteen dash twenty sixteen, establishing advisory committees that function solely to make recommendations to the mayor and the city council for the city of Truman, Arkansas, and assigning their structural responsibilities, whereas the city council of the City of Truman recognizes the need for organized and efficient advisory committee structure to assist in governance and policy development, and whereas the council desires to formally establish certain advisory committees, outline their membership duties and procedures, and affirm their advisory only role to the mayor and city council, now, therefore, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Truman, Arkansas, section one, establishment of, of advisory committees, the following advisory committees are hereby established and shall serve only in an advisory capacity for the mayor and city council, these committees shall not exercise legislative, executive, or administrative authority, and their recommendation, recommendations shall not be binding on the city of Truman, finance committees, replacing the former budget committee, public works committee, water sewer, streets, parks, sanitation, public safety committee, replacing the former fire and police, along with the transportation committees, personnel policy committee, standing maintenance tag, sports, recreation, and events, Truman industrial development and code enforcement, have been established by other ordinances, section two, committee membership and meetings, each advisory committee shall consist of seven members, and include at least two council members, one from each seat, remaining members will be recommended by the mayor for the few needs needed, the mayor and appropriate department heads shall serve as non-voting ex officio members of each committee, committee meeting schedule, finance committee, fourth Tuesday of each quarter, or as requested in writing, by at least four committee members, public works committee, first Tuesday of each quarter, or as requested in writing by at least four committee members, public safety committee, third Monday of each quarter, or as requested in writing by at least four committee members, other committees will meet as needed, with meetings called by the mayor or requested at, by at least two committee members, sports, recreation, events committee will meet according to its ordinance, each committee shall report its recommendations only at the next regular meeting of the city council, section three, terms of service, committee members shall serve for a term of two years for appointments made during the month of January each year, council member representatives shall al, always serve two-year terms on advisory committees, terms shall be staggered so that each committee will always include at least one council member with a minimum of one year's of service on that committee, this structure ensures continuity and preserves institutional knowledge across all advisory, no council member shall serve on more than two advisory committees simultaneously, since the members who are currently serving on other city advisory committees shall not serve on advisory committees concurrently, section four, appointments, committee membership shall be recommended by the mayor and approved by two-thirds vote of the city council, appointments should reflect the qualifications and interests of city coun, of council members when possible, if a vacancy occurs due to the departure of a council member, their successor shall assume their committee seat, all other vacancies shall be billed using the standard appointment process, section five, committee chairperson, committee chairpersons shall be appointed by the mayor and must be current members of the city council, all advisors shall be conducted as public meetings in accordance with applicable law, the committee chair, in conjunction with the mayor, is responsible for ensuring that an official agenda is prepared, and that minutes of each meeting are recorded by the city clerk according to the ordinance establishing job duties of the city clerk, public notice of meetings and the filing of approval minutes shall be carried out by designated mayor or city clerk, received from the committee chair, section six, purpose, the purpose of this ordinance is to provide structure, transparency, and continuity in the city of Truman, these committees shall serve in an advisory capacity only to support the mayor and city council in making informed decisions that benefit the residents of Truman, section seven, repeal of conflicting ordinance, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in contrary with this ordinance are hereby repealed, section eight, advisory review, any issue which falls within the jurisdiction of an advisory committee shall, may be reviewed by the appropriate committee, upon completion of this review, the committee may report its recommendations to the city council at the next regular meeting, subject matter, the subject matter for each of the standing committees shall be as follows, finance committees shall have the responsibility of hearing and making recommendations to the city council on matters concerning budgeting, public works committees shall have the responsibility of hearing recommendations to the city council on matters concerning streets, parks, buildings, insurance maintenance, blood drainage, matters of public roadway, solid waste, public safety committees shall have the responsibility of hearing recommendations to the forecourt on, should they be steady?
That's closely city council, I thought I had changed that, apparently I didn't.
Public safety committees shall have the responsibility of recommendations to the city council on all matters concerning public health and safety, transportation, animal control, fire protection, police protection, in addition to the above, the following jurisdictional assignments shall serve as general guidelines for the council, matters each advisory committee may review, the mayor shall determine the proper placement of any issue within the jurisdiction of an advisory committee, once assigned, that committee shall have the responsibility. Once assigned, that committee shall have the responsibility of hearing the matter and making recommendations to the city council. This advisory committee process is intended to allow for additional review, deliberation, and input related to issues which the council may consider. Any recommendations made by an advisory committee of council are strictly advisory, advisory, and non-binding upon the council.
All right. First, I need a, I need a, uh.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, that date should be twenty, uh, I'm sorry, it is correct, ten months.
Uh, I need a motion to amend the ordinance where it says form court, change to city council. Make a motion. I made a motion. Grandster made a motion also. Next, steward say. Any discussion on that?
Who's saying it?
Passes through. All in favor, say aye, no. Now, that's the way it is there. Now, county, a motion to approve. Bonnie Winkle made a motion.
I'll say.
Just for a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye. opposed with no. All right. It will move on to the second reading. Big part. All right. Uh, you should have received the legislative audit report in the mail. If you didn't, uh, I had to go over that with you. And that's gonna be real quick. Uh, I'm glad, I'm glad to report that there's been no findings at all, not even supplemental findings. Uh, this comes from making sure we're verifying the legal improper. And I will continue to strive to make sure our audits are like this each year. And I appreciate our department heads for doing their part and making sure that this is done right. They're making it right, so, uh, that's, that's the report on that. With that, I have the mayor's report. I will start with another grant report. Uh, Bill Duskin on this, Arkansas approved the City of Truman for another five hundred thousand dollar grant to move forward with phase two of the Sunken Land Trail. It should get the trail to behind the high school. Uh, the new stage at TRC has been completed. I say completed, the stage itself has been. We will now begin working on getting the top done. Uh, most of the stage was done in donations from different citizens and businesses. Uh, Rick McKenzie donated labor for the walls. Edgar Broden donated some of the concrete. Jeremy Osborne donated the reinforcement wire rebar. And preparation and framing for the actual top of the stage was donated by an anonymous donor. And it will be, uh, we greatly appreciate it. These folks, uh, in the state has always been used. Uh, at the Duck Festival, I heard several positive comments about that, especially the man appreciated it, being appreciated. Does that work? It is, and that, uh, they, they, they were glad that it was, uh, much bigger because it gave them a lot more room, and so they were glad for that, which is, that's what we needed, so. And it looks good. Uh, Church softball league has been completed, and now the fall men's league has started. I'm hearing some good things from out there already. We'll talk after the first week. We have met the grant folks for the new lighting and started that process as well as applying for another grant to help finish out the new lighting. Also, I sent all of you a list of properties that Mr. Wayne Schmidt compiled in twenty twenty-two. These properties, he said, needed to be condemned. And if you've looked at the list of properties of the seventy-two on the list, fifty have been taken care of by either being raised, renovated, or condemned. Of the twenty-two remaining, thirteen are not good addresses. Uh, of the remaining nine, they are either in the process of being condemned, on the list to be condemned, or are not eligible to be condemned. As you have seen by the resolution from tonight, the cost to condemn and raise these properties is very expensive. Uh, we will continue to attempt to put liens on these properties as they are being raised if owners don't pay the bill. But until they pay, that comes out of the city's budget. This has been a priority since, uh, since I've been in office, and I've made that clear. And we're gonna continue to keep working on that. Uh, the Wild Duck Festival was great. It was the largest one yet. The firework show was top-notch, and the carnival was wonderful. Uh, I met with EECBG folks about two hundred thousand dollar grant. Talked about that earlier. Uh, uh, and we're gonna see how long it'll take to get that done. We've been dealing with grants, you know, it takes time, and you gotta improve all the red tape, and everything's gotta be perfect. So we're working on getting that done. We should have everything ready to rebid the clear water tank project by the end of the week. Uh, we're working out the details with the school for our third SRO officer, and look forward to having that worked out very soon. We've started working on drainage in the Swainy addition. Uh, we are hoping that the work we do there will alleviate some of the water issues for them in that area. Uh, we have maintenance crews working on all of our fire hydrants in town. Uh, they're, uh, gonna let us know if any issues happen with any of the hydrants. And, uh, also work towards, uh, repairing those issues. And, uh, they're also wanting to paint every hydrant and thing. That's part of American Day, that's part of the problem. They won't have to do that, so.
That's how you get to learn what Gary Anderson did.
This, this will take a little, I'd say, this, this will take a little time, uh, to get them done. Of course, as Ernie said, he knows nothing on that over that deal. Uh, they've already started on that. We're also actively looking for funding, uh, for adding hydrants and locations that don't have them or have to few. Uh, and finally, the overlay work on the streets we got the grant for is finished. We didn't have grants go. This was, this grant was approved December of twenty twenty-three. Let me see how long it took to get it done. So, but it's done, but we can't ever get forcing them out, as they say. And, and it looks good. Uh, I have applied for another grant to get some more streets open. And that's all I have. And with that, was there, did you get?
Yes.
And on the public, over public comment, Wayne Schmidt has asked to speak. Schmidt, uh, you guys got about three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, let me say that, uh, my name is Wayne Schmidt, six oh one Honeysuckle here in Truman, Ward Two. I used to be on the city council for six years back in the eighties. And I'm so happy to see some of those houses on Ellis Street with the same ones I turned in during the eighties. So I know a lot of you aren't that old, but here I go. We are now approaching three years since Citizens for a Clean Truman submitted seventy-two structures for demolition. Code enforcement has made some progress in this three-year period.